Alive. Okay. Bring to order the Everett School Committee meeting from October 19th, 2020. Begin with a roll call, please, Addie.
Mr. Barrows.
Here.
Ms. Cardello.
Here.
Ms. Lambert.
Here.
Mr. La Monica. Ms. Murray. Mr. Panerisi.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
Here.
Ms. Sarny.
Here.
Mr. Abruzzo.
Here. Seven members present, we have a quorum. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Room number three, reading of the records.
Make a motion, waive the reading and place on file.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to waive the reading and place on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, I have it. Room number four, public comment.
Make a motion to open public comment.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to open up the school committee meeting for public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, I have it. Do we have anyone interested in public comment?
We do. Give me a little bit.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Parker.
If I may, if you're home viewing it on Facebook, within the comments should be a link to the public comment portion if you'd like to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. We have closed public comment.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to close public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, I have it. Room number five, for the superintendent. Superintendent De Huyen.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to all of you and to everyone watching at home. Item number one is the superintendent's update. Tonight's report is varied and reflects the unusual nature of the 2021 school year. So we're going to be sharing our screen. So first and foremost, I have several things to share with you that reflect the simple but very encouraging fact that we have clearly moved past the opening stage of the academic year. We are developing a relatively comfortable rhythm that is hard to describe but very easy to feel. For this, I do want to thank our students, our teachers, our families and staff for their commitment to teaching and learning. Every day I hear at least one story from an educator about how against all odds we are making e-education work for our students. So I hope tonight's presentation gives you a little bit of a sense of what I'm referring to. On the other hand, the continued realities of COVID-19 require us to make deliberate and thoughtful preparations about the next phase of our reopening. This will entail careful deliberation of health factors and meeting the needs of our students. We will cover all of the major up-to-the-minute considerations a little bit later. But first, I wanted to start in the best place in the city, which is one of our classrooms. So last week, I was fortunate enough to see the opening of the CSD program at the Lafayette School. Five kindergarten students, as well as one teacher and one paraprofessional, returned to the classroom on Wednesday, October 14th. Every day, the students will arrive by bus at approximately 8:00 a.m. and dismissal will be at 1:30 p.m. We will continually assess the day and make any changes that benefit these students. We will pay particular attention to dismissal time as the students are understandably tired at the end of the day. But the staff at the Lafayette report that the students settled into the classroom routines and structural with little to no problem. And this speaks very positively, I think, to our kindergarten and online instruction that's been going on for several weeks now. I did get to talk to one parent who said her child was thrilled to be back in the class at the Lafayette. And I can tell you unequivocally that I saw pure joy on the faces of teacher Catherine, paraprofessional Ranjit, and principal Brady when I visited the classroom last week. And while five kindergartners does represent just a tiny percentage of one school's student population, this experience is more valuable than some might expect. Each day brings about opportunities for growth and chances to address and solve problems as a team. And all of these lessons will be shared district-wide when the time comes to bring back our students in larger numbers. We saw this also at the Devon School, when, to just use one example, we quickly learned that we needed to procure several different types of masks based on the sensory needs of our students. So we are using these experiences to inform our future planning. Changing gears, I'd like to briefly talk about a fantastic collaboration between our schools, City Hall, and Everett's vibrant art community. On Saturday, October 3rd, Everett teachers and students lent their skills to a mural project on Ferry Street not too far from Everett High. The project was made possible by Mary Carlo Di Maria and coordinated by the organization Neighborhoods Design. Scores of volunteers chipped in to paint a 750-square-foot mural on Beautification Way. Kevan Kavarian School art teacher Carolyn De Chico and art coordinator Amanda Gill were on hand, as were several of our students. So please be sure to check out the mural over the next few weeks as it takes its final form with the help of the local artists. The theme of the project is celebrating unity, diversity, and connection, which I think takes on an added meaning right now. On that front, I would like to take a quick moment to commend Neighborhoods for successfully organizing the event in a way that guaranteed full participation under the safest possible conditions. And I also want to thank the mayor's office for including the EPS in this fantastic project. I also want to give a quick shout-out to the Webster 3rd grade teaching team for organizing a fundraiser to purchase books for all 50 of their students. So 3rd grade teachers Ms. Pelletier, Ms. Abruzzo, and Ms. Cardello, and special education teacher Ms. Palucci raised enough money to purchase 10 books for every 3rd grader, which they will be distributing over the course of the year. So last week, students picked up their first two titles, Upside Down Magic and Narwhal Unicorn, the Sea. While we're doing amazing things with e-education, there is indeed nothing like being able to turn the pages of a book. I think this effort is emblematic of the dedication of the teachers throughout our district, and I look forward to being able to share these kinds of stories with you on a regular basis as the school year progresses. Additionally, I wanted to share with you in the community two tremendous acts of kindness and generosity. First, Exelon Generation has given the district $20,000 in gift cards, which will be given to students to buy school supplies. Whether it's a donation like this, or sending talented professionals to work with our students, or judging one of our science fairs, Exelon always epitomizes the ideals of a community partner, and I just want to thank them. Secondly, we also received an anonymous donation that will benefit each and every one of our staff members. The gift consists of more than 861 sets of five masks each. The masks are meant to be reusable and do not require washing. You wear the mask for one day, store it in a bag for a week, and then it is ready to wear again the next week. The donation, which was facilitated by school committee member Marconi Almerde Barros, is large enough where we can provide one set of masks to each and every person who works for the Everett Public Schools. And I will be talking more about this innovative donation later on this evening. Students in grades K to 8 took the I-Ready Math and Reading Diagnostic Assessment for the first time remotely last week. Teachers took Monday to go over the ins and outs of the assessments and goals for their classes. Teachers will use this data to make individualized math and reading targets for students based on their results. 82% of our K-8 students have completed the diagnostic, and teachers are working to virtually practice or make-up sessions. We are launching some fun I-Ready incentives each week for grade-level teams that have the highest performance and usage of I-Ready lessons. And in an effort to support our families, we utilized already-existing I-Ready videos, and we had our family liaisons voice over those videos in our major languages on our website to help our parents and guardians at home understand the purpose of this initial assessment and how to support their children at home as they took this assessment. So I'm going to play a quick video for you that highlights some of these videos, just a part of the videos that we shared with families.
If you turn off the speaker, I think that'd be fine.
So I applaud our families for helping their students prepare for the I-Ready tests, which obviously were administered very early on in a non-traditional school year. The assessment completion rates are also a testament to the commitment of our curriculum leaders and teachers. We were understandably a little bit anxious about what remote assessment data would look like, with the possibility of students asking caretakers for help or not taking the assessment as seriously as they would have in a classroom setting. But I am thrilled to report that a comparison between this year's initial diagnostic results with last year's shows very small differences. Certainly no evidence of a dramatic inflation, or what we'd expected to potentially be a significant decline in results due to the break in last school year. So a quick look at the numbers show that our 2019 fall completion rates were 92% for math and 74% for reading. This year, our rates are 87% for math and 86% for reading. So these statistics are very encouraging overall. And as a result of these, this assessment, our teachers are now well-equipped with high-quality data that they can use to help their students in the short, mid, and long term. So continuing with the theme of family engagement, last week saw the EPS release an interest form to parents and guardians about free virtual English language classes. So the form is posted on our website and is available in all four major languages. It enables us to quickly gather information that will help deliver the best possible options to the community. So classes will be taught by an Everett teacher and will be offered in the afternoon and evenings. We are hoping to have three cohorts of 20 participants each beginning in November and running for 20 weeks. The survey that was posted was posted on Tuesday, October 13th, and it had generated more than 360 responses as of 9:30 this morning. We did ask input from families on whether they were interested in classes in beginner English, intermediate English, or learning to read English. We also asked them to provide their preference on days of the week and specific time slots. We are also looking into providing credit-bearing ESL course opportunities for parents and guardians during the spring semester by partnering with a community college. So at this point, we will turn our attention to COVID-19 and our initial thought process on what the next several weeks will bring. As everyone knows, the second phase of our reopening is supposed to begin on November 16th to coincide with the start of the second quarter. This calls for students to return to school under a hybrid model that combines in-person teaching and learning with our existing e-education framework. But we also know that the pandemic has a way of obliterating our timelines, a reality that is better to confront than to wish away. So tonight, we will take a look at how things stand right now and what factors will go into our decision-making process in the coming weeks. So this slide describes the health and safety metrics released by DESI, which serve as a guide as to whether districts should utilize remote, hybrid, or in-person models of teaching and learning. Every Wednesday, the Department of Public Health releases its weekly COVID-19 public health report that contains critical metrics for every community in the Commonwealth. It uses color-coded categories that are calculated on metrics over the prior two weeks. So red represents communities with more than eight COVID-19 cases per 100,000 residents. This is the category that Everett is in, as we gather tonight. DESI recommends, but does not mandate, that districts in red communities use remote learning. Yellow is for cities and towns with more than four and up to eight COVID-19 cases per 100,000 residents. Green designates communities that have four or fewer COVID cases per 100,000 residents. And unshaded is reserved for communities with very small populations and fewer than five cases within the last 14 days. So it is DESI's expectation that districts follow this color-coded metric unless there are extenuating circumstances identified after consultation with local health officials. So this includes reviewing additional metrics such as whether cases are increasing or decreasing, the local test positivity rate, and other contextual factors as well. So while daily, average daily cases per 100,000 over a two-week period is the metric that determines the color coding for each community, DESI has advised districts to also monitor whether cases are increasing or decreasing as compared to the prior period. The local test positivity rate also remains an important metric to monitor. In consultation with our local Board of Health, DESI has urged districts to consider whether these additional metrics and underlying data may indicate other concerning trends. It is noteworthy to mention that DESI has stressed the importance of looking at multiple consecutive COVID-19 reports to assess trends in order to inform any changes to learning models during the year. So although we are all aware that Everett is currently designated in the red zone, it is important to note that DESI recognizes that there are certain unique community situations that could cause the metric to be recorded as red, and they hope to release more nuanced guidance very soon to provide direction for districts who may experience a red metric related to the location of perhaps a house of correction, a college, or nursing home spike in the virus. So with that said, now I'd like to turn to a deeper look at the COVID-19 data as it pertains specifically to Everett. So the chart on the left shows that Everett's two-week rate of positive cases per 100,000 is on the rise. The red line reflects the rates that are adjusted for Everett's population. So in simplest terms, these numbers show how and why Everett is currently listed in the red category. Obviously, we will be closely monitoring any and all statistics on a daily and weekly basis. The second chart on the right shows a comparison of total tests, which is on the left axis, and total confirmed cases, which is on the right axis. Everett continues to increase its testing capacity as part of its safety efforts, which does result in more positive cases. The number of total cases tracks back to March and does include people who have recovered. So here is further data that points to a cautious approach in the coming weeks. The chart on the left shows the recent rate of increase for Everett's COVID-19 case count and its positivity rate over 14 days. So the numbers are trending upward in each instance. The chart on the right shows the overall total number of COVID cases continues to climb. For any district in the red to seriously considering going to a hybrid or in-person model, the metrics would have to clearly demonstrate over a three-week period. So in other words, it is not akin to an on-off switch. If we went from red to yellow on a Monday and Tuesday, we would not be able to return to school on Wednesday. And as we have experienced time and time again, the pandemic is demanding a large measure of patience. Our situation is not unique, as I'm sure many of you know. On October 14th, 23 cities and towns were placed in the red category, bringing the total number to 63 across the state. So while considering all of this information at once is daunting, we have the time between now and the proposed start of Phase 2, which is November 16th, to really make deliberate and informed decisions. My proposal is that we have a discussion tonight that will inform the creation of several options that we will then present to you at our November 2nd school committee meeting for a vote. I also do view the next several weeks as a critical exploratory process. So as always, we will be guided by the most useful medical and safety data and the needs of the Everett Public Schools. My current mindset is to put as many workable ideas as possible in front of all of you and our leadership team, you know, from broad health considerations to potentially reexamining what our school day will look like when students return to school for in-person teaching and learning. Central to this process will be the formation of a medical team that will review Everett's COVID-19 data on a daily and weekly basis, providing us with the information that we need to make the most beneficial and logical decisions for our students and staff. So we will aim to convene a multidisciplinary team made up of EPS and Everett health professionals, community stakeholders, a representative from the Cambridge Health Alliance, parents and ETA representatives. Speaking more specifically about safety protocols, I want to look more closely at pool testing, mobile health applications, and temperature checks. So pool testing is designed to enable organizations like ours to affordably access routine testing that meets or surpasses all regulatory standards and can deliver results within 24 hours. We are also investigating the usefulness of having parents utilize mobile technology in which they can take their students' temperatures and upload the information into an app. And lastly, we can consider temperature screenings at our school buildings. DESI has recommended against this over concerns about false results, but that doesn't mean that they won't make sense for us at some point during the 2021 school year, considering the ever-evolving situation. We should also assess all viable daily and weekly schedules. So our current hybrid model calls for students to adhere to an alternating weekly schedule, one week in school and then the following week remote. Consultation with our medical team, as well as our leadership team, and other stakeholders might move us in a different direction. So for example, we could consider one in which we have students, like many other districts, go to school on Monday and Tuesday, or in another group on Thursday and Friday. Under this model, Wednesdays would be reserved for the intensive cleaning of our buildings and remote learning for all of our students. We could also take a more gradual approach, which could include delaying the start of hybrid learning or shorter school days. One idea that does pique my interest is having students attend school in the morning and dismissing them with a hot lunch around noon time. Other suggestions that have obvious merit are reopening school for students in certain programs and select grades like those enrolled in our Career and Technical Education Program at Everett High. I would also like to see if we could use our buildings to slowly and safely bring back students for extracurricular activities such as clubs and organizations so that students can share positive interactions with each other. Overall, I am very happy with where we are today, just over a month into the school year. I am especially relieved that we are in a position to add to and to build upon what we've already established, as opposed to needing to suspend a hybrid model over COVID metrics. Our e-education model is working, and teachers are reporting positive gains on a regular basis. Again, it's not exactly what we expected, but you know, so far, we have seen a lot of positives. Our educators are using common planning time to discuss their experiences and share best practices. We've seen successful use of Newsella, for example, a program that allows teachers to assign current event articles with corresponding questions that spark higher-order thinking, meaningful conversations, and academic writing prompts. Another popular program is Brain Pop, which approximately 2,300 of our students are utilizing on a weekly basis to learn and review critical concepts. Another final example I'll use is us greatly benefiting from our decision to use Clever, which is kind of serving as a digital backpack that allows our students to access all learning platforms in one place. So certainly, COVID-19 continues to pose challenges, but with each passing week, we work from greater positions of strength. And for that, I thank our students and our families, our teachers, and our community leaders like yourselves for your perseverance and patience. So now, I would like to open it up for any questions or comments and possibly discussion about what the transition to Phase 2 could potentially look like.
Questions? Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Superintendent. So the goal of these kind of themes that you think of putting together would be supporting those now and trying to do an assessment in a weekly or in a daily basis with the cases that we, well, following with the number of cases that we have daily Everett, and come up with a final proposal to us before November 2nd, right?
That is correct. I'm thinking at least three options from which you can choose. You know, definitely, one of the options would be moving forward as we had originally planned, but I do think that considering the trajectory of COVID-19, it does warrant further discussion and potentially presentation of other options, whether that means changing what the hybrid model could look like, whether it's shortening the days, or even going to, you know, the two days versus the alternating schedule. So we will definitely, one of the options will of course be to go, move forward as planned, and that would be November 16th, going And that would be November 16th, going week on, week off. However, again, because of everything going on, I do want to make sure that you have all of the data at your fingertips and that also you are very informed when you make a decision about potentially what we should do for the transition into Phase Two.
And one more question would be regarding attendance. Not sure if you will be presenting or mentioning something on that, but we discussed that during our last meeting, and I'm wondering how things are, if they have improved, both at the high school, but also in, in our other schools, such as the Carling School as well, and the leader and all the schools that we have. Is that any update, has things improved? Were we be able to get in contact with parents? And also with the high school kids, that special ELL kids who are not attending class?
Yes, so we are steadily making progress. And at our next school committee meeting, I think that's a very clear point. We want to have that data too, when we're determining, you know, whether or not we want to stay remote. So I could certainly present that as well. I think we've been slowly and steadily making gains there as we do exactly what you just mentioned, which is contact families. You know, we've also again identified families that maybe are not in the district anymore. But again, that comes through contacting the families and finding out what's going on. But then also we are continuing to get out more hotspots to our, our students. We're also continuing to get out devices and actually we had many who did an initial request for devices for the beginning of the year. Those who had confirmed a device for the start of the school year, this week we are giving them out for any who missed their appointment. And then after this week, we'll be repurposing those and assigning them for other students who may need them. So I think as we're continuing to get the technology out there and contacting the families and getting in touch and building relationships with students, we are seeing a steady rise. And we are also perfecting how we look at that data as well, because as I mentioned last time, there were some areas where we realized we weren't quite framing the data appropriately, such as at the high school, when we were looking at daily attendance as first period attendance versus as the majority of the school day. So in doing all of that, we have seen increases in the attendance, and I can certainly present that too, so that you have that when you are making your decision about whether or not we need to delay hybrid or go straight to hybrid, and that could certainly be a determining factor.
All right, thank you. Ms. Cadell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, through you to the superintendent.
Right there.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the superintendent. And their program that we're doing at Lafayette with the kindergarten students, can you speak a little bit more to that? Are we going to do, try that in other, in our other buildings or other schools? And also, at what point, if this is successful with the kindergarten children, will we move on and bring in maybe first grade, second grade, and still to the left?
So one of the things that we have been exploring is bringing back the CSD first grade class at the Lafayette. And so we are trying to very slowly bring back classes in this, in, with the same tiers that we had discussed before, you know, our high needs populations, our younger students. So we are continuing to move in that direction, and I think we're doing so successfully. So I think, you know, even if we were to delay the hybrid, I would definitely recommend that we continue to try to transition in, in, it's some, in some way. So we would certainly continue to do that. And that's what I kind of meant too, about even thinking about other ways that we could bring students into schools too, even if it's after school, maybe for, you know, programs and clubs. But I do think that regardless of, of what we choose as our transition plan for Phase Two, that either way, we should be steadily trying to, to come back.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, another question on that.
Goodness, good.
Thank you. On the CTE program, I'd like to see that implemented almost the same way, because those, those subjects really need to be more hands-on, and our CSD students need to have more of the one-on-one. So I, I think doing that, and even if we had to postpone the actual hybrid for all for a while longer, we'll at least be making progress in doing so.
Yes, I totally agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cadell. Ms. Lambert?
Through you too, Madam Superintendent. Um, what lessons learned did we have from the e-learning centers? And where can we scale those lessons, whether it be, you know, positives or things that we know we want to avoid?
So I, I think that, you know, the e-learning centers, regardless of what we do moving forward, I do think we would need to have another application process, because let's say we were to delay going to a week on, week off, or, or a true hybrid. I do think that we need to give our parents the opportunity who may have planned that we were coming back to maybe now is a time that they would like to join an e-learning center. So I think one of the lessons learned has been, you know, we did give our families a timeline, and I'm glad we did, because we want to have something to be working towards versus not knowing one way or another. But we would need to open that back up, because this may change the demand for those. Another one of the lessons learned, I think, is that, you know, those e-learning centers, I think were really great for some, for some of our students were jump-starting them into the e-education model, but that once they were kind of in it, they felt comfortable going home and doing it. So that was another interesting lesson, is that we were a little bit confused about, wait, why, why are we actually losing students? But it was a good way to get them engaged to start. But then, once they were kind of in the flow, they were like, okay, I can do this at home. And or their, and their parents felt more confident after they had walked through it for, for a week or two. And so I think one of the biggest lessons we've learned, you know, this year and just with the e-learning centers and with everything, is that, you know, this is becoming very individualized. You know, we can't necessarily anticipate how our families are going to leverage these opportunities. So I think it continues to just be important that we offer access to these opportunities in whatever way our families need them. And, and to be flexible about that, like, okay, if you don't want to be in an e-learning or you don't need an e-learning center anymore, that's fine. You can do this at home. We're just glad that now you, you feel comfortable and you're signing in. Whereas there were other families that tried it for a few weeks, and they're like, this just isn't working for us, we need an e-learning center. So I think our, the biggest lesson is just us being able to be flexible and fluid and being responsive to the community's needs.
Did it give us any, you know, strategies as for health and safety, you know, on how to bring back classrooms? So lessons learned in that regard, as far as what it necessarily has to look like to get kids back safely, whether in smaller or larger groups?
Yes, I think that, you know, the, the protocols that we have put in place, we have actually learned a lot, like, for example, you know, the, the different kinds of masks that we realized for our students with our, the sensory issues, definitely even placement of where we are putting our antibacterial dispensers. And we have all of these like pop-up ones now too, which were very helpful, because now we can kind of place them strategically, doesn't just have to be in a bathroom or on the front desk. It can be, you know, throughout a building, throughout hallways, throughout the, the gymnasium. So I think we've started to figure out too, and our custodians have been amazing in figuring out like, okay, what are the right ways to just make sure we're constantly cleaning, processing, whether it's a quarantine room, the bathrooms, making sure that we are spot checking the, the, all of the, you know, soap dispensers. So I think that those are definitely things that we can scale. I certainly think that we will learn more as we bring back these classrooms of students, because you learn differently about what is needed for safety when you now have students who are doing live instruction. So we're learning new things from that as well. Again, it doesn't look like it normally has in the past. It's in row, you know, students are sitting in rows, the collaboration is different. So our teachers are in that aspect, they're going to be able to share with teachers who are coming back, like, what are some best practices for being able to teach in this way that kind of goes counterintuitive to what we've been trying to do for so many years, which is more collaborative instruction, student dialogue? So we're trying to figure out ways too, to be able to, you know, make the most of the high-quality education that we have and can provide to our students, even given some of the constraints that we're under. And I think, again, our teachers are really creative in doing that. And so the fact that we're sort of transitioning in slowly, I think, is giving us a greater opportunity to kind of figure these things out and then, and then be able to scale them.
And just secondly, if we can make sure that we have any of our vendors, especially Elliot, because as kids come back, there's going to be a huge transition, even it may look behavioral, it may look like anxiety. So, you know, just to make sure where we don't have in-house adjustment counselors, just to make sure Elliot's on board with being able to support our schools.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Sunny?
Thank you. In the beginning, you mentioned about English classes, and I think it's a great idea. Do we have a lot of parents signing up? Are they also, do they have computers? Are they requesting laptops as well? Do we?
So they will be provided Chromebooks when they're, when they're taking the courses. So yeah, so we will provide them, and they'll be disinfected and they'll be able to, you know, take the classes there. Or they, they could do it remotely, but part of our plan too, is to potentially bring them in. And that's why we were kind of doing the survey to see what are their preferences? Because we did have some technology classes for families where we brought families in. So we haven't totally taken off the table the fact that we could do it in person if we're doing it safely and in a big space. But either way, we'll make sure that whatever the devices are that we need, that if they were doing it from home, that they have what they need. But that if we are here in person, also Chromebook still may be helpful in that, and then they would have them set up for them.
Which I think is a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sunny. From the chair, Madam Superintendent, on your list of sort of options, there was something about the medical team, in terms of consultation as to this whole process. And I think that's vital, because you actually mentioned a specific instance, like, all of a sudden Middleton was in the red, and Middleton happens to have the House of Correction in Middleton. And it turns out that there was an outbreak in the jail there, and that's why Middleton was all of a sudden in the red. And I understand that these are guidelines that Desi's providing us, and I take it ultimately, we would be the ones deciding when and if. And that's where I believe it's vital in terms of where we get our medical information from, because let's face it, this in many, many ways has become a very political kind of a situation in terms of, you know, hey, I love Governor Baker, but I know Governor Baker wants everybody to go back to school yesterday, you know? And at the same time, it seems like Everett, Chelsea, we're just automatically in the red zone. Every time we look, I mean, we've never moved out of the red zone. So I, I personally would like to have, you know, the answers why, you know, it's sort of like this foregone conclusion that we're just going to stay in the red zone. And I guess what I'm saying is ultimately, in terms of the medical people, I'd like them to be as independent as we possibly can. Like I said, everybody now knows who Dr. Fauci is, but I heard Dr. Sacks from Brigham and Women's the other day, sort of give, not that he disagreed with Dr. Fauci, but there was an entirely different slant to his take on the virus itself. And, you know, I guess what I'm saying is that I think what we really, really need for us, for students, parents, teachers, custodians, everybody that comes into the schools, I, I guess we really, really need to get as many facts as possible, you know, medically. And yeah, I know there's no guarantees, and the switches, if you get on a daily basis, maybe on an hourly basis, but just that, you know, we can be completely comfortable with whatever decision we ultimately have to make from an independent medical standpoint, if what I'm saying makes any sense to you.
Absolutely, and we're actually have a list of epidemiologists some at Desi, but some not. You know, some that work for the state, some that work for Harvard, that we want to get their opinions. We want to have CHA involved as well. And, and this is something too, we've been trying to do, you know, throughout, we didn't have someone on one of the steering committees that was from Harvard Epidemiology, but we did have somebody who was talking to the leadership team regularly about what they were finding, what they were putting out for schools. And but I mean, like you said, even there, you, you'll hear different people saying, you know, having different interpretations of what this is going to look like. One of the things that I do think that we have done well here is taken the information, and many of it, much of it is very conflicting information, and made the decision that's best for us here in Everett. And I think at the start of that, you know, we actually had a very unique design because of that, because we were again, just paying really close attention to what we felt like we needed here and, and what made most sense for us. And I'm hoping we can continue with that, because I think that so far that's worked, that we do just need to, like you said, not make this political, but really make this about the research, you know, and just our and your expertise and understanding of our community. Because I think that's what's most important here, is what, you know, we know is going to work best. And I think even we have found some interesting, you know, even with the e-learning centers, I originally had expected we would have more students at the e-learning centers. And I think, of course, if we come back and we were to do hybrid, we would have, obviously, our students would be coming back and it would be half of them. But I do get the sense that there are a lot of families who, who, who were preferring remote at this period, and who are also looking at the same information we're looking at, looking at these same trends, and, and making their decision accordingly, and made their decision accordingly with the e-learning centers. So I, I think that, again, there are so many different things to consider, but as long as we're being, you know, very mindful of, of all of the different research and all of the different potential solutions we have, and then really thinking about what our community needs, I think that, you know, we'll be, we'll be well-suited to make, to make a decision moving forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Barrows?
I, you know, I don't want to like assign, but I want to remind everyone that we, we have our own hero here, Mr. Paneris, who is out there saving lives, and I'm sure could contribute to this process of recommendation to us. So, sorry, Mr. Paneris.
Mr. Paneris? Microphone out.
So I've been with these people from day one, and I was telling Mr. McCallion, Ms. Cadell before, I mean, if we train the kids right, it's as easy as wearing a mask and washing your hands. It's that simple. And if we keep, the kids keep their distances, there should be no problems, really. And it's, it's really as simple as that. Not, not that I'm over-exaggering, but that's 90% of the problem right there. Wearing your mask, washing your hands, and you're safe. It really is, it really is that simple. The problem is a lot of people don't want to hear that, and they, you know, they want to be a little more freedom, but it's a different world today. I mean, this is my 12th hour wearing a mask today. I live with them on, it's part of my body now, you know? But it's something we all have to get used to, and you have to change, or it just won't go away if people don't want to change. If they change, it, it will start to decrease, it'll start to break down, and hopefully next year we'll see it better yet. But right now, we, like I said, we have to take precautions. If the, the kids get used to it, you know, and I understand the younger kids, it's tough for them. But, um, so if, I think the preschool is probably tough for them. So then what we have to do is you protect the teacher then. And that's, that's the way you have to look at it. If, if the kids, then most of the kids that age can't wear them with, with a lot of issues and not be able to wear a mask. So then you just protect the teacher, and as long as we have that consistency of keeping clean and wearing a mask, someone's protected, we're good. And it's really, it's, 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 it's an easy mindset if, if everyone just gets used to it.
Thank you, Mr. Paneris. Anyone else? Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. So item number two is the acceptance of the increased access to after-school, out-of-school time and summer learning programs continuation grant for $77,400. The purpose of this grant is to provide increased access to out-of-school and summer programs with a focus on both academic and enrichment activities to supplement the school day.
Mr. Park? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the superintendent. This grant, is this to complement the $20,000 that we, we put aside for the after-school program? Is this in addition, addition to, or will it kind of offset some of that money?
So this is in addition to, so this
So this is in addition to, so this, or, or could offset so that money. So it could be either or. And it's a continuation of a grant that we already have.
All right. Thank you. I'll make a motion for favorable action.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say.
Thank you so much. So next on the agenda, we have a request to approve staff technology policies. So there are two policies in particular, the acceptable use policy for employees and the EPS laptop policy. The acceptable use policy communicates in very clear language to our EPS staff how the district's computer and network resources are to be used so that the environment is safe, secure, and reliable. So I respectfully request that policy to be approved as is. The EPS laptop policy has been amended to be entitled the EPS Laptop and Device Policy as it specifically outlines the responsibilities of any staff members who were given a district issued laptop device or cell phone or Chromebook. So I respectfully request that policy be approved with the amended title of EPS Laptop and Device Policy.
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second.
I think we should take this separately to be safe. So if we can make a motion, I'll, I'll make a motion to move a favorable action on the acceptable use policy for employees.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the, approve the Everett Public School acceptable use policy for employees. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to amend the Everett Public School Laptop Policy to read Everett Public School Laptop and Device Policy.
Second.
Get a second. Motion made and seconded to amend the Everett Public School Laptop Policy to read Everett Public School Laptop and Device Policy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Park.
If I could, I'd like to make a motion of favorable action to accept the policy as amended.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the Everett Public School Laptop and Device Policy as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say.
Thank you so much. At this time, I would like to respectfully request your permission to bring forward World Languages Department Head, Dr. Andrea Tringali, to give an update on the Seal of Bilinguality.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to bring forth Dr. Tringali to give us the Seal of Bilinguality update. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say. Welcome, Dr. Tringali.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. As you know, last year was our inaugural year and we were very excited to honor 17 students with the Seal of Bilinguality and six students with Seal of Bilinguality with Distinction. This year, we are really hoping to increase our numbers. Unfortunately, at the last meeting, I wasn't able to attend because I was attending a meeting for the Seal of Bilinguality and then subsequently another meeting with Desi regarding world language and seal changes. At this present time, with the new information that I have learned, I'm working on a pre-registration Google Docs to send to our seniors who are interested in pursuing the seal and also flyers in multiple languages that hopefully we can post on social media so that as many families and as many people know that we're going to be offering the seal again this year. Currently, I've had meetings with Ms. Peg, Ms. Peng and Ms. Janet regarding the funding for our Seal of Bilinguality. And I've also reached out to different companies so that I can find out and report back how the exams will be offered, the different ways the exams will be offered, and also how much they may or may not cost, especially given a remote or an in-person testing site. And then the last thing I wanted to report, I found out this at the past meeting that one local university has decided to give college credit for earning the Seal of Bilinguality and additional credit if you earn the Seal of Bilinguality with Distinction. So that's fantastic news for a lot of our students that can leave with college credits in their, in their repertoire when they move on to the university.
Okay, turn this on. Mr. Park.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, Dr. Tringali. Thank you for appearing tonight. I want to say thank you for your due diligence. Quite frankly, I thought the Seal of Bilinguality might have gotten lost with the regime change and also still, of course, with the COVID-19. So I was very, very excited to hear that it actually went through a graduation. We accepted this as a body a year ago. So maybe if you could just give a quick recap exactly what it is with some of the new faces, both on the body, the administration, and also for the folks at home, and, you know, how much of importance this is to our students.
Sure. So this is an initiative that Desi, the Department of Elementary and Secondary, had adopted formally a few years ago. And it helps support any of our students who show bilinguality. And that language could be a language that they've learned through the Everett Public Schools, or it could be a language that they have learned either on their own or at home. Students must, there must, there are two criteria in order to earn the seal. You must have received at least a 240 or higher on your MCAS exam. And you need to score high on the state language assessment or the approved state language assessments for the Seal of Bilinguality. And there are several of those. And if by chance you speak a language that isn't offered in a testing site, then we would do a portfolio to make, to kind of check your literacy skills. So it, it really encourages bi and multilinguality within the students. And as we know, it is a very, languages will help our students in so many different ways. This is a great way to showcase our skills because we have so many very talented linguists that attend our schools.
And, and along with being included in the students' records, it's actually printed on their diploma?
That is correct, yes. It shows up, this year we printed seals on their diplomas. Next year, we're hoping to print the seal on the diploma and also to emboss it on their transcripts. And then the seniors who graduated last year received a letter from Desi with the opportunity if they want to pursue education, that they received like a voucher for the teacher test. So a lot of great opportunities.
Thank you, Ms. Park. Anyone else? If not, Dr. Tringali, thank you. Your attendance? I like the word, I like that due diligence and thank you for appearing before us and your excuse with, with the customary thanks of the school committee. Thank you.
Thanks all very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Tringali. Finally, number five on the agenda, we have a request to accept the donation I mentioned earlier this evening, of 4,360 N95 decon and reuse masks from a generous donor who would like to remain anonymous, but who would like to donate these masks in memory of Edward D. McClure. Edward D. McClure, a good friend of Dr. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr., spent his life personally and professionally demonstrating inclusion, understanding and bringing together people of all backgrounds to make for a richer, more just culture. As many have said in various forms, in the face of injustice or mistreatment, the only thing necessary for the triumph of, triumph of evil is for good people to do nothing. It is in honor of Edward D. McClure and all those who have actively worked to make for a better tomorrow that these facial coverings have been anonymously donated for the safety, support, and well-being of all the teachers and staff of the Everett Public Schools. I want to thank Mr. Marconi Almeida Barros for connecting us with this generous donor. This is the donor's second donation after donating 12,000 disposable adult and child masks at the end of the last school year. And while this donor wants to remain anonymous, I would like to thank them wholeheartedly for their continued support of the health and safety of the Everett School community.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation.
I'll second.
And a letter of thanks. Very thoughtful as well.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the donation. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say. Mr. Barrows, I mean, you can personally thank this person and really appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Adam submitted by school committee members, Roman numeral six, number one, 2020 MASC Resolution, Mr. Park. Now it's time for the Frank Parker Report. So within your packet, there is the resolutions from the National Association of School Committees. As you know, probably where November 7th is your annual conference. Earlier this year, you elected me as your delegate. So what I'd like to do is I'll make a motion to lay this on the table till our next meeting. At our next meeting, we will then take each resolution one by one and we'll ask each member to vote and how the body votes is how I represent the body as, as your delegate. So with that, Mr. Chairman, if I can make motion to lay this on the table to our next meeting, which I think is November 2nd. Motion made, motion made and seconded to lay this item on the table until our next meeting of November 2nd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say. Okay, Mr. Park, and number two, proposed subcommittee structure to begin in 2021, Mr. Park.
Okay, if, Mr. Celestin, can you, if you had the spreadsheet, please? Thank you. So what you have before us is, is a matrix. So on the left-hand column, it's the current committee structures that we have. And across the top row, it's proposed. We've had conversations before as a body about consolidating the committee structure. We've got like 23 different committees. Some, we don't even know why they exist, they never meet. And we thought it'd be more prudent to kind of consolidate here with some surrounding communities do, or how they're structured. We have this piece, we have a piece to reform the committees and the moves committees as we speak. But I drew up this, this document to kind of get the conversation started and kick things off. So if I could just explain it real quick. So again, like I said, it's common versus proposed committees. And, and those are names I just came up with. You know, it's, I'm not asking it to be set in stone, I'm looking at front foot, you know, but, you know, at least it gives you an idea of which way I think we should be going. So what I did was I took the current committee and I kind of placed an X in the proposed to kind of show you where we fall through. So, you know, it goes from 23 committees down to five subcommittees and then is the one budget of the whole. So it's like, for example, student achievement, anything student related, we'll go to student achievement. And of course, we can call that something else. So the only thing that didn't carry over was the committee on the annual report, which I can't recall at every meeting. But I did double-check state stature, national laws. There was no requirement for us to have a subcommittee on the annual report. The annual report is developed by the administration and approved to us as a body. So it doesn't get carried over because I guess in a sense that it'd be handled as a, as a committee of the whole. So, so with that, I want to look for input from my colleagues. What do you think? I'd also welcome and entertain anything from central administration, what their thoughts might be. So at this point, I would make a motion to refer this to the committee's own rules.
I'll second that.
And if you have any questions, you know, right now I'm prepared to answer.
Well, from the, from the chair, I just want to say to Mr. Parker that I really appreciate, and I think the rest of the committee really appreciates the time and effort that went into this. Quite frankly, you know, you're absolutely right. And as chairman, what is, was kind of embarrassing, Cynthia became a victim of this as I had to put people on committees and Cynthia found herself on probably 15 committees and was worried that, you know, the rest of her life was going to be taken up. You know, the, the fact is, as Mr. Parker said, many of these subcommittees have nev, have never met. But I think I put you on all the ones that meet all the time though. But having said that, I said, I think it's a terrific idea to streamline this. And I just want to compliment you on the, the fine work you did. With that, this motion is made and seconded to refer this to our Rules Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I say. Number three, update on the total amount of fiscal year 21 FEMA eligible expenditures through September 30th, 20, and the status of the reimbursement.
Mr. Parker? So, Mr. Chairman, as aware, a lot of the, the expense of PPE is reimbursable through the governments to FEMA. Depending on who you talk to, that could be a very immediate reimbursement process or it could take up to two years. And what brought this to light was, and I'm sure we've seen it in the invoices that we've had over the last couple of weeks, things like $24,000 on the automatic hand sanitizers stations alone were spent one week. And there's probably an additional $16,000 in, in masks and gloves. And I know we signed off a bill today, I forget, it was for batteries. I forget if it was for 1,600 batteries or $1,600 in batteries. So as you can see, this, this is adding up, right? $24,000 on hand sanitizing stations is about 225 Chromebooks. But the way the reimbursement process works is that the money goes from whatever authority to the general fund, which is managed at City Hall. It doesn't come directly to the schools. So I was told a couple of years ago, oh, if it's there and you want it, you have to ask for it. So therefore, if maybe through the superintendent, she can give us a status of like, you know, what we spent so far and any idea of what's been reimbursed, because at that point, we can then come up with a motion and ask for the money. So through you to the superintendent.
Yes, absolutely. So the city is working with FEMA and MEMA on a regular basis and they, we have submitted expenses through June 30th and we're currently working on expenses through September 30th now. They have not given any feedback yet, other than requests for additional supporting detail or justification on certain items. They have required that each invoice be entered separately, as well as every line item of each invoice, as well as uploading the invoices. As soon as the city starts to receive feedback, they will be looping us in. In the meantime, we've been submitting our expenses to the city auditor's office on a monthly basis. The total request we have submitted so far totals approximately $1.4 million, of which PPE-specific items total approximately $400,000. Roughly, roughly half of that were for expenses prior to June 30th. But we submitted anything, including items like online resources needed for distance learning, just in case any of them could also be reimbursed. Also, I have our chief finance, financial officer, Anu Jant, on the Zoom meeting as well, and she can answer any questions in detail or on more specifics.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make motion to invite Ms. Jant, please.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to bring forth CFO Anu to respond to some inquiries. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, I say.
Good evening, school committee members. So the superintendent is accurate. We have been submitting all our expenses on a monthly basis. So anything that was submitted for expenses prior to June 30th, the city has already submitted those requests through the FEMA application process. And what we have heard from them is that even though And what we have heard from them is that even though the books have been closed on FY '20, when we ultimately get reimbursed for any of the expenses that hit in FY '20, they will be looping back to give us that reimbursement.
Mr. Parker? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the CFO. So therefore, I heard the two dates. Expenditures through June 30th, and then expenditures through September 30th. So let's talk about June 30th. We've already submitted what we spent through June 30th. And that's through the, we submitted that directly to the city. Have they received any money from the agencies such as FEMA?
No, 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 they haven't received anything yet. So the application for all expenses through June 30th was submitted, I think it was just last week. So we haven't received any of that yet. But they, they will be giving it that back to us in terms of a reimbursement, whenever that reimbursement comes in.
Okay, so I'm hesitant about the word, you know, they're going to give it back to us. I just want to make sure that we understand what the process is. It must be expected, and you know, it's obvious, you're tracking the information, all of it. So when the check hits the general fund, we as a body need to have an item on our calendar asking for that money. That would refer to the mayor, the CFO, and of course, the city council president. So please, as you're watching this and tracking, and I know it's important to you, you're doing it anyway, make that a agenda item under the report of the superintendent so we can act accordingly. Thank you.
Of course.
Mr. Barris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Mr. Parker's note, I just want to now remind everyone that this is like a reimbursement. Just want to make that clear. It's a reimbursement. So whenever we go to the city council or to City Hall, we're not asking for additional money to our schools. We are asking for reimbursement of things that we spent it. And now the feds, and also believe the state through MIMA, will reimburse us. So just want to make that clear, that there, there is no headlines on the newspapers. Everett Public Schools is asking for additional money. And they just came in here and they asked for money, and they said they are not coming back to ask money. Now they're asking for additional money. Now, this is reimbursement. So just want to make that clear. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barris. Anyone else? Mr. Parker?
To that point, so we are not asking for all reimbursements. In this case, it's PPE, but we've been told this fiscal year, don't ask for the Medicaid money. So we, that's a reimbursement we should be entitled to, but we're not going to ask for it. We've been told you're not going to get it. In fact, the resolutions I spoke of regarding MASC, if you look at resolution number six, it talks specifically about reimbursements going back to the schools districts. It's just not happening across the state. So to your point, Mr. McConney, and you bring up a great one. I'm not asking for additional money, just like you said, a reimbursement. But when I've been asking for all monies to be reimbursed that come to the general fund, depending on what the category is. So I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you. Okay, so I'll just, I'll make a motion to refer the matter to the superintendent to work with her leadership and keep us posted as we diligently await lots of money coming back. And it should appear at a time.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to refer this matter to the superintendent, who will keep us updated as to status of reimbursement, her and her staff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I say have it. Anu, thank you for your presence here tonight.
Thank you.
Item number seven, subcommittee report, finance committee from October 15th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Mr. Parker?
Mr. Chairman, I undertake a motion to move for favorable action to accept the subcommittee report. Have it placed on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept the subcommittee report on finance and place it on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those, I say have it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So just to summarize, the meeting that we held last Thursday. So it was regards to the request from Malden Transportation to pay them 70% of last year's monthly bill. So for example, this week, or I think this month, it's going, for October, it's going around $61,000, $65,000. A year ago, that was like $250,000 to $300,000. And there was a couple of questions to ask before when it went into committee. First of all, the governor's decree is ordered that we could pay for services not rendered. They expired on June 30th. And then, and I'll refer this matter, I'll ask Ms. Cadello to explain, because between her and Ms. Giant, they did, they do diligence, a lot of background as to whether, you know, the key question was, you know, can we do this? Is it legal to do this? So if I could, Mr. Chairman, if I can ask Ms. Cadello, she wrote her homework on this, if she could explain the answers to those questions. Ms. Cadello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Parker. On, on this item, I did a lot of research, talked to city people. Anu Giant did a lot of research, did a very nice presentation at our subcommittee meeting. It's very clear, we're actually not asking to be paid for services not rendered as far as the bus driving and the monitors and that, because they are doing it. It's just that it could take twice as many buses, twice as many employees to transport our students. For an example, if they have a bus that normally would carry 20 students, and we have even 18, we cannot put them there. We have to use two buses, nine students per bus, each bus with a driver, each bus at that size with a monitor. Now, we did find out they cannot be reimbursed from us for their PPE. And that was one of the things that they had put in there. But as far as the services that they are rendering, it's twice as many vehicles and a lot more employees for less, less students. Because we don't have all our students that are even using the busing that we provide. So we do have students that need it. They are servicing those students very well, from all I understand. So we just wanted to bring this after listening to Eric Demas from the city, and Anu Giant, and having Mr. Maravitat answer questions at our last meeting. I think we feel comfortable about bringing this before the board. Any questions that anyone may have with a favorable recommendation? It would have to be sent to Rob Marashi, because we need an addendum to the contract that is now standing. That contract was extended and is due to expire on June 30th of 2021. In the meantime, because we're changing the money, we're not living to the exact words of the contract, an addendum would have to be put in place, and Mr. Marashi would be the person to do that. So our recommendation at the subcommittee meeting, which was my colleagues, Mr. Parker and Mrs. Tani, was that we would bring it to the full board with a favorable recommendation to allow this, and then send it to Mr. Marashi to complete the addendum so that we can work, work with them and service our students.
Mr. Barris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So let me see if I, if I understood that clearly. So I, the Subcommittee on Finance is recommending that we modify the contract and we pay for these services, which not all of the services. So we pay more than what we are getting, in other words. And I'm just trying to understand. And amend the contract. So my question is, if we continue, I mean, there's a big if there. But let's say that we continue with the same delivery that we have now, which means that we have the same amount of kids, we are not going back to hybrid, oh, actually, we are not going to hybrid, right? We are remote, we continue, let's say that we continue to be remote to the end of this school year. So we, we will pay this company all the way until the end of the school year for services that we did not receive. Is that, is that a correct assessment?
Mr. Parker? I guess in theory, you're correct. But the, the argument is, is that we do, we do have a contract. And while they're not driving as many kids, they're still maintaining their fleet of vehicles. They're trying to maintain their, the number of employees, and, you know, maintaining the insurance and all the aspects that go with the, with the transportation company. This would be on a month-by-month basis, is how that amendment would work. Because there's chances are, once the next stimulus package goes through, that all the transportation will receive money such as they did last year. Last, last year, and they shared their financial data with us, and maybe the CFO can help me out on this. But I believe their, their revenue for last year was $2.2 million, and their expenses were 2.6.
Yes, so, so the detailed financials, sorry, I think I'm echoing. So Malden Transportation shared their detailed, some of their detailed financials with us in order to make this determination. What they are looking at right now with some of the fixed costs and the current staffing that they have, they have laid off roughly half, or more than half of their drivers, bus monitors, and they're running right now with just the capacity that they need for Everett, but also with the hope that that's going to ramp up if we're moving to hybrid. So looking at that, their kind of break-even point has been about $195,000 to $200,000 a month. So that's kind of where the 70% threshold that they had requested came in, came in place. So we would do this, or if, if we choose, if the school committee chooses to approve this, we would do this on a month-to-month basis, as Mr. Parker mentioned. And then they are also applying for the stimulus loan again. So if that kicks in, we wouldn't be paying the 70% anymore. If actual costs end up being over that, obviously, we'd go back to actual cost pricing. But for now, on a month-to-month basis, we'd approve the 70% based on their fixed costs and personnel wages as well. The PPE request was kind of over and above that, and that was coming up to about $33,000 for the rest of the year, because it was $5 a bus per day. And the recommendation at the subcommittee meeting was that that shouldn't be part of the cost that EPS pays for, so that would be taken out. But the recommendation was to go with the 70% to keep them basically solvent as we go through this, this rest of this year.
Barris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And have we checked with the, I guess it's a question for the subcommittee. So have we checked with the city solicitor, or the city attorney, or the state? Is this legal to do? I just do not, I mean, I respect the recommendation of my colleagues, but I have several concerns. And I do not want, of course, the company to know to close, or they already laid off their staff. There has nothing to do with the company, not at all. But I just want to make sure that it is perfectly legal to do.
Through you, Mrs. Chairman.
The emails were going back and forth between me, Mr. Demas, and the auditor's office, and legal for the city, calling me here specifically. And I'm just going to read you this last part of what was the final recommendations. I'll read you the whole thing. Chapter 92, this is coming directly from Colleen, Robert, and Eric. Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020, which allowed for payments to certain school vendors under contract that were not able to provide services, ended on June 30th. FEMA has, number two, FEMA has declared, in their updated guidance as of 9/120, that PPE is no legal reimbursable unless it is utilized solely by first responders. The third one is, appears to me that additional services requested by the vendor would require at a minimum an addendum to the existing contract approved by the school committee. And as Mr. Parker said, that would be on, and Anu mentioned it as well, on a month-by-month basis, because, I mean, the hope is that things do start opening up more, the hybrid goes into place, and then hopefully, early next year, we'll all be back into school and everything will be up and running. And it may not be early, it may be later, but whenever that happens. And we can always go back to them and ask for their numbers and see how they're doing. And Ms. Demas seems to have a very good rapport with MTI, and they've been very open with her, you know, with their books and all. And I think at any time, if we needed to know how they're doing, they still need that 70. If we're giving them more students, can we go down to 60%? I'm sure we can change that addendum as need be.
Mr. Parker?
So if I can just add to that. So first of all, you know, we have the money there, it's in the line item. The course of action would be an amendment to the current contract, which was the guidance given to us by Mr. Demas and also the city solicitor. Separately, the school bus issue is not impacting just Everett, but there's a lot of communities across the state in bus companies that are going through this situation. And recently, Deputy Superintendent Si was on a meeting, which included Jay Sullivan from DESE. He's like their financial guy. He gave the same type of guidance that, yes, if you're under contract and you amend it, you can do this. So I'm pretty confident, based off of Mr. Demas, the city solicitor, Mihia, and Mr. Sullivan, that, you know, we're doing everything by the book. We did not ask Mr. Galvin to come to the meeting Thursday night, because I'm sensitive to legal bills. But we did ask for his opinion, and I know we're still waiting for that. So that's, that's my point. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Haven't heard from Ms. Lambert yet. Go ahead, Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the questions I had, I did have the opportunity to watch the finance subcommittee meeting, was because we're a smaller district, what risk, if we don't do this, what risk will it be? Because I know it was talked about as far as going out to bid for other vendors that we're a small district. Could you talk a little bit more about that?
I, I can add that, and this is, this is more, let's say, my opinion, I suppose, just based off of my numbers. But we're, we're kind of unique, that Malden Transportation Services just our homeless and also our special population. They've got about 50, 60, I think, vehicles, right? Compared to like an eastern bus, which has like 300. You know, the larger bussing companies want to move your entire enrollment, right? They want to move all your kids. We've got a special population that needs help, and that's where, you know, Malden Transportation kind of has a niche. So I don't know how attractive we would be to one of the larger bus companies. And also to, you know, within, within the transportation industry as it pertains to education, it seems to be that, you know, once you get the contract, you tend to keep it, and you have less competition. So I just think it's, it's been a longstanding relationship with Malden Transportation. I know it's been well over 25, 20 years, 25 years. And I just think it's an obvious interest to see that they're solvent. And also too, you know, besides transporting our kids, they also hire a lot of Everett residents, whether they're bus drivers or their monitors. So there's an incentive there to help some of our families from that standpoint, too. So, but I appreciate, you know, your questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cadello?
Thank you. Just one more thing, and Mr. Parker brought this up actually at the subcommittee meeting. We would still be staying within the original money that we have allotted for that line item for Malden Transportation. So it's not like we're going to come back and say, we need more money to fill this request. So that's another thing we're now going over and above. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barris.
Thank you. Mr. Barris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry to be asking so many questions regarding this, because it's money for me as a concern.
Don't ever, don't ever be sorry for asking questions.
So I just, I totally respect the recommendation of my colleagues. I just want to make sure that we are not opening a precedent for other vendors to come to us and say, well, you did for them. Now I made my contract, so you can do for me as well. So we need to keep that in mind. Even, even if we have the money in the budget for all the vendors, right? They could come to us and say, well, you did for modern transportation. What you can do for me, you have the money in the budget, assign it for me as well. So there's one has to be cognizant of that. And we are not treating Company A more especially than Company B if they come to us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barris. So, so with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to refer this matter to our next meeting on November 2nd to accommodate the request of modern transportation at 70% of the prior month and year's invoice and not PPE. So if we confer that to the meeting of November 2nd, it also gives our colleagues here more time to ask more good questions, such as they're doing tonight. So. Basically, the motion is to place this proposal on the agenda for our next meeting. Under the report of the superintendent. Okay. If I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to place the issue of the modern transportation 70% proposal on the agenda for our next meeting under the report of the superintendent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those that have it. Roman numeral eight, bills and payrolls. All right, Parker, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So bills and payrolls totals $1,016,418.90. Excuse me, my glasses are fogging. So I'd like to make a motion to accept bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,016,418.90.
Second it.
Motion made and seconded to accept bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,016,418.90. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,016,418.90 and ask for a roll call vote.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,016,418.90. Roll call, please, Addie.
Yes.
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 Yes, 70 affirmative, motion passes. We have no unfinished business, no new business, no hearings. Prior to Roman numeral 12, matter for executive session. Just want to thank all the custodians, the audiovisual crew, Gage, Devo, Connor, and the cast of thousands who made this possible for us to meet here tonight. We really appreciate it and the fact that, I know you're looking out for our health and safety as well as students and teachers and everyone else. Just want you to know the school committee appreciates it. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion for the school committee to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collect the bargain or litigation. An open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of a public party and the chair and ISO declare, which I do under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3. And also, under number two, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law, federal grant and aid requirements pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7.
So move.
Mr. Parker. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we move it to executive session. We will adjourn in executive session and will not be reconvening as a public party in an open format.
Second.
A motion made and seconded for the school committee to adjourn to executive session where we will adjourn from and not come back in public forum. Roll call vote, please, Addie.
Yes.
Lambert? Yes.
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 Yes, 70 affirmative, motion passes. School committee will now enter executive session.